And Rory and Liz would be calling in?
I believe they're both going to be participating by Zoom.
Okay.
Liz might be a minute or two late.
Okay.
Liz is over there in the attendees.
Is she over there?
Yeah.
Okay. Hello. Hi, Liz. I made it.
Hey, guys. Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Wonderful.
Uh-oh. Hi.
And no Terrence tonight, is that correct? Okay, correct. Think we have everybody? Okay, terrific. Welcome, everybody. Good evening. It's so nice to see everyone. And it's my pleasure to make a motion that we enter back into public session. If I could please ask Julia to second, thank you so much. And if we could all vote on that motion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Terrific, six zero. Thank you so much. And as is our custom, in just a second, we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please rise for the pledge? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Terrific. Thank you so much. And thank you to our community members who are joining us this evening. We can see that community members are joining us even as we speak. And I'll just mention in the event that it becomes necessary. I think with Zoom, we're limited to 500 attendees. But please know that this meeting is being recorded and will be made available from our website. And we appreciate your patience as folks continue to join us. So our board reconstituted on July 9th, three weeks ago. I just want to start by briefly thanking members of our administrative team, who in between that meeting and this meeting have been working tirelessly, along with members of the faculty and staff, to work their way through guidance documents that have been provided by the Department of Health and the State Ed Department, CDC, so that we could be prepared to have this conversation tonight. And we're really looking forward to talking about reopening plans in progress. We really appreciate the extraordinary teamwork that has gone on behind the scenes around the clock in between our last meeting and tonight. Before we turn our attention to a discussion of those reopening plans, I just wanted to pick up briefly where we left off the last time, which is to say that it is the time of year where we appoint board members to subcommittees. And we tried to give this a little bit of thought in advance. So I'm up to 7.01 right now. And I think we're doing this before we go around for board announcements. But I do want to pause briefly, Andrew, just to ask you if you would prefer to say anything at the outset of our meeting here tonight before we dispose of this one item of business?
No, I have plenty to say later on, I think, I'll wait, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for bearing with us procedurally. So we're trying to strike a balance here of some continuity and also the opportunity to provide board members with exposure to subcommittees that maybe they haven't served on previously and would be interested in experiencing. It's also been our tradition in past years to invite a new board member to be the liaison to parent council. And if I can just start with that for a moment to ask you, Catherine, whether you would be willing to serve in that capacity. It seemed like a really nice opportunity for you to continue to have interaction with PTO representatives and also with our administration. And now to serve wearing a different hat.
I'd love to, thank you.
Okay, that would be terrific. So thank you so very much. And also, just to start with our policy committee, which is also a great opportunity for board members to start to really take a deep dive into some of the policies that govern interactions between and among students and staff and our facilities. Would you also enjoy serving on the policy committee this year?
I'd love it.
That would be great. Okay, so with that in mind, then I think we were otherwise envisioning some continuity on policy where Liz and Bill would stay on, if that's acceptable to Liz and Bill? And Bill, you would chair the policy committee?
Sure, to their regret, but sure.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And Liz, that's good for you as well? Did I lose Liz? Did we lose Liz? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can circle back to that in a second. And then just moving on to finance, where Rory and Julia have both served in the past. We were hoping that Rory would be willing to chair the subcommittee this year. And thank you, Rory, I see you nodding and...
Thank you, yes, I'm honored, thank you.
That would be great, thank you. And Terrence had indicated that he would like to experience the finance committee and also the audit committee, where I hope that Julia would continue to chair. So audit would be comprised of Julia, Terrence, and Bill. If that works for everybody. And then at least sustainability, where Rory and I have served and really enjoy being part of that committee and where we hope that Liz would join us. So a lot hangs in the balance here when Liz comes back because we think she's going to bring some great strategies for raising the profile of some of the great work that's going on vis a vis sustainability in Cottonton, Lewisboro. So those are our official board subcommittees and our parent council liaison. And then the only other item I just wanted to raise is that we have been talking in recent past meetings about administratively establishing a committee related to equity and diversity and inclusivity. And this isn't something that really is completely in the board's purview, but I think it would be great if we maybe have some opportunity for board representation on that subcommittee. And maybe, Andrew, as that committee is coming into focus, we can circle back to it publicly and then talk about board liaisons there. I think that's really all we needed to accomplish regarding subcommittees for tonight. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, thank you for making short work of that. And I think that brings us to 8.01, which is our opportunity for board announcements. Did any board members have announcements tonight? Beyond our deep gratitude to everybody at this table? And if not, then, Andrew, we would love to hear from you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. So tonight, we are going to spend some time talking about reopening plans. Thank you to the board for giving us this opportunity. And we're glad to have a chance to share our thinking with you and with the community who are at home watching. Thank you all for joining us. Before I go any further, I want to thank a lot of people who've been working with us for the last several months. I mean, you'll see as we go through these slides that thinking really goes all the way back, even to March and April of the spring, when we were still in the distance learning experience. And literally hundreds of people have worked with us over the time, many, many colleagues, as well as community members. And we are so grateful to all of them for all of the input and feedback they have given us. So we're going to dive right in here. And I do, I want to start by clarifying some things tonight as best I can. And I think it's important to say that tonight is not a decision about how school is going to open. It's more accurate to describe tonight as a description of the thinking that we've been doing about some of the different ways that school could open. And I just want to make sure that that distinction is absolutely clear for people. Governor Cuomo has said that he will make some announcements next week. The deadline for school districts to submit their plans is tomorrow. Although, actually, just yesterday, we learned that there was an extension offered to districts if they felt the need of one additional week. Some districts may well take that offer. We will not be, we will be submitting our plans tomorrow. But I also want to make clear that plans will continue to evolve. And the state actually defined the plans in that way. They asked us to submit three plans, but they also described these plans as living documents that will sit on our website, which I think is good thinking. I appreciate that on the part of the state. I think it's recognition that nothing is static in the world at the moment. It's the conditions are constantly changing. And I think there's a recognition that any plans that we have made and thought about and will talk about tonight could very well change as conditions change, continue to change in our community and around the state. And Governor Cuomo has been clear that he will make a decision when he feels the time is right, based on the public health and science and the data. And that that's will, that ultimately will inform how districts open. Nonetheless, it's very important that we've given as much thought as we have to all the different possibilities. And that's what we will talk about tonight. I also want to say that there are necessarily many compromises in all of the work that we'll be talking about tonight. That's the nature of our lives at the moment, of the world that we're living in. We are trying to accomplish many different things and balance many different things, starting, obviously, most importantly, with balancing the best education we can possibly provide with the health and safety of our students and our staff and our community. And those two things create some tensions between them. And so there have to be compromises. And you'll hear quite a bit more tonight about some of the very different needs and wants from our, from our community, from our families. And those create tensions and different wants also. So again, there have to be balances, there have to be compromises. And you'll see that as we move forward through this presentation, which I'll start to do now. So these, on this slide, you see some of the principles that have been guiding our work all the way back to the spring and continuing up until today and will continue into the future, starting first and foremost with health and safety. Nothing should be or could be or will be more important to us than that for our entire community, our staff, our students. That will be the priority. We need to create a caring environment for all. That will be the foundation of a quality education. People need to feel that they're known and that they're cared for. We are obviously pledged to providing a quality education. You'll hear more about that tonight. And we're very committed to the idea of continuity of education. And this is something the state speaks quite extensively about in its guidance, in the guidance documents that it's provided to us, with the understanding that it is very likely that situations will change in, up till September, after September, and that we have to be ready to prepare, to provide continuity of education to our students, no matter what the situation is and what transitions we might have to go through. That also requires a great deal of flexibility, which our plan speaks to. The state puts a very appropriate and strong emphasis on equity and on making sure that all students have what they need to be successful. And we make, obviously, the same commitment to that in KLSD. That's an important part of our plan. And a very important part of our plan has always been and will continue to be communication, which is not just to share with you our thinking, but to ask you for your thinking also and to make sure that we are informed by that. We'll share more now about how we've done that. So as I mentioned before, our gathering of feedback and input goes all the way back to when we first had to, unfortunately, close schools back in the middle of March. But we began pretty early on gathering focus groups of students to ask them how the experience was going. We met with our parent council multiple times through the spring. Parent council, for those who may not know, is the leadership team of all of our PTOs. They were incredibly valuable in providing us insight into how the experience was at home. We said many times that we needed eyes and ears into what was happening at home to help us with feedback. And then in June, we conducted the first of our large surveys. And you can see there that we got more than 1,400 responses from community members on how that distance learning experience was going and some very specific feedback, which has proved very helpful to us as we've been planning through the summer. And we will share more in a little bit later tonight about some of the things we learned from that survey. We also, that was, that was to families. At the same time, we did conduct a survey directly to students. You can see there, we had more than 550 responses from students in grades five through 12. So a lot of input, which has all been valuable. And the plans that we'll discuss tonight are very responsive to that feedback. Most recently, I'm sure many are aware, we did another survey asking families now, in light of thinking about September, what their thoughts are about returning to school in different formats and about riding our buses. That's important information. I'll be speaking more to that soon. But you could see there, again, we got very, very good responses, more than 1,800. So that represents more than 1,860 students. So more than half of our student population, which was really helpful. And then most recently, the Thought Exchange, which was that opportunity to participate with 14 other local school districts in a new kind of software that allowed people to submit their own thoughts and thinking about the return to school and then respond to the thoughts and ideas of others. You can see that they were, actually, that, I think I miswrote that. There were 14, more than 14,000 participants in the Thought Exchange, not responses. People could submit multiple responses. And more than 1,300 of those participants were from right here in KLSD. And it represented parents as well as staff and students. So that was also very helpful to us. We've also continued engaging stakeholders, as I mentioned before. We've had subcommittees looking at various components of these reentry plans all the way back to late May. More than 100 members of our staff have joined those committees. We are very grateful to them. They continue to meet through the summer, really providing us with invaluable thinking about what the work could look like and should look like as we move forward. More recently, when the guidance arrived from the state and guidance arrived from both, well, you'll see in a moment, from State Ed as well as State Department of Health. And we formed a steering committee, a smaller group that could look at that guidance more carefully and think more concretely about plans for the fall. And then most recently, we had another meeting with about 30 parents and students to give us some initial feedback on thinking that we were doing that has led us to where we are tonight. So lots of very helpful feedback. Now, in this next slide, you begin to see some of the more concrete details. This goes back to the survey from the spring that we did, which was very helpful to us. And you will see that we are responsive in it, in the thinking that we're doing. So starting at the top there, we did ask about internet service. That's something that the state actually required us to ask about. Obviously, in a distance learning environment, it's incredibly important to know that our students are able to access what we're providing. And we are fortunate to have 91% of families saying that they have reliable internet service. But it's equally important to remember that that 9% on the other side is not a small number of families. And that's a group that we do need to be concerned about and that we do and are reaching out to, to find out how we can provide service and be helpful to them so that the students in those families, should we be in a remote environment, will be able to get the education that they need. You can see the next point, parents of the younger students were more concerned about extended time online. That concern decreased as students got older. That was important information to us and informs tonight's thinking. The next two points speak to what the experience was home in terms of managing the school day and how, whether more structure was better or less. And perhaps not surprisingly, but in families with the younger students, a very structured day was more difficult, more difficult to meet deadlines, to be in class at certain times. So they appreciated the flexibility of lessons that could be accessed at other times. Whereas when students got older, families reported that they could manage and would appreciate a more fixed daily schedule, more like a regular school day schedule. Regular contact with teachers is a priority. And many of the responses, structure and accountability are valued according to many of the responses. And we did hear frustration about the multiple software platforms that we were using in the spring. And we're very pleased, we've already announced previously that we're making the transition. We've made the transition over to SchoolAG. So even though those other platforms from the spring haven't gone away, they will now be housed in a more singular platform that we think will provide, if it's, if it's needed, it will be needed, much, much greater ease of use. So again, that kind of information was very helpful to us. And I think you'll see that it does, it is reflected in the plans we described. This was the most recent survey that we conducted, responses from 866 students. We asked if everyone wished to return, all students in September, for the full in-person model, would you send your children to school or not? 71% said they would send their students to school. So, once again, on the flip side, about 29%, not a small number, said, said in their best thinking at that time, that they would not send their children to school if all children were coming back, if it was a fully in-person model. And then we asked a variation on that question, if we were in more of a hybrid model with some students in school on some days. And there you can see the numbers changed quite a bit. It went up to 88% saying that they would send their students to school again at the time of this survey. So now the number drops to 12% on the other side at that point, saying that they would not send their children to school even in a hybrid model. So those numbers are important to us. They give us a sense of where families are feeling and thinking. All very understandable. And you'll hear more in a little bit. But we will be going back out again in the near future with very similar questions. We want families to have a chance to think about the plans that we'll be sharing tonight. And then we'll go back and out and ask those questions again. And last number down there, we asked about bus ridership. And 41% would not ride the bus. Now, I know that many of our community would say, well, a lot of people don't ride the bus, even in more typical times. We know that, we're accounting for that. So we look at typical ridership in the elementary schools, the middle schools, the high school. And we can say that that number is higher than it would typically be even in the elementary schools and the middle schools where there is generally higher ridership. So we do anticipate that our buses will be a little empty here should we be able to open this fall. So all of that is very useful data to us. And again, we'll probably be asking for it again in the near future. And that's what this next slide says. That is, the information that you just saw there helped us with some of the planning for tonight. But our planning is not complete. It, as I said earlier, it needs to continue. It needs to be refined as we move closer to school, as we hear from the governor about his thinking and as conditions may or may not change. But we will be going back out. And this time, we'll be looking most likely for a little bit more of a sense of commitment from our families. Because once we can firm up those numbers and get a real sense with some certainty as to how many families might choose to keep their children home, that may open up other possibilities for us, which could be helpful in providing the best possible experience for all of our students, which is, of course, what we want to provide. So here you see that the guidance from the state arrived from the state Health Department on July 13th. It arrived from the State Ed Department on July 16th. Today is July 30th. So we've had two weeks of the state's Education Department's guidance. That document is 144 pages. It contains a great deal of information. We've had a lot of people reading through it with us and thinking about what it requires. We feel that we're in good shape in meeting all of its requirements. But again, that doesn't equate to necessarily the plan that will allow us to open in the fall. But you, it does, it does allow us to give you all a great deal of information about how we would open and how we would make sure people are safe. Moving on, the plans, we are required to submit three different plans. One for a fully in-person, one for a hybrid, and one for a fully remote model. The state asks in its guidance that we would prioritize in-person learning while balancing health and safety. And then the state says that if necessary and/or if possible, to prioritize in-person learning for the youngest students, if we can't do it for all, in other words, prioritize the youngest. And then those who are receiving special services, English language learners, and are those who have limited access to technology. As I've said earlier, Governor Cuomo intends to make a decision in the first week of August. At least, that's what we've heard most recently. Again, I would say everything is subject to change. I mentioned before, flexibility, continuity, and quality. So here are some of the things that we've been thinking about in developing our plans. We know that we need to be able to shift in and among any of the models at any time, from in-person to remote and back. We want to provide continuity of the experience for students from school to home and during transitions. We, this is, this is language that comes to us from the state, that we understand it, it makes sense. We need the ability to provide substantive daily interactions between students and teachers. The state, if we had state representatives here, they would tell us that they conducted some very large meetings around the state in different regions to gather their own feedback. And I know that they would say this was something that they heard over and over again, that substantive daily interactions are important. And that's why it's an important part of their guidance to us. That, the next bullet point is our language. It's important to us to be very thoughtful about the quality of the experience that our teachers can design and deliver and make sure that we're allowing them to work in models that will support their ability to deliver the highest quality experience to our students. And then we also work with the knowledge that some students may always be home, regardless of the model that we're in, for understandable reasons. And that just presents some additional challenges that we need to be thinking through and that we have been thinking through. So now, talk a little bit about how we make this work. So how do you make in-person learning work in a, in an environment in which the pandemic is still around us? We are very fortunate with the most recent numbers in Westchester County. They have been trending down. They are certainly much, much, much more positive here than they were back in March and April and May. And we're very fortunate for that reason. Nonetheless, we have to be very, very mindful about keeping those numbers low for the health and safety of all. So when it comes to making in-person learning work, we have to think about space. We have to think about staffing. And we have to think about the protective equipment that people need to stay safe. So let's talk a little about social distancing. The state gives us this guidance. And it suggests that six foot is its distance that it considers to be appropriate social distancing. And you can see in the second bullet point there that it is our intention to structure all school activities around a six-foot social distancing to the greatest extent possible. We think that makes sense, based on everything we're reading, to try to do that as much as we possibly can throughout the school day. So where does that take us? Takes us to the idea that elementary classrooms could now hold up to 12 students when the desks and chairs are spaced at six-foot distances. And secondary classrooms, again, in many cases, about 12. And some, some are a little bit larger. But there you can see right off the bat that with social distancing in place, we simply cannot fit all of our students in school on the same day and meet those requirements. So the next bullet point there, you've may by this point have read about it in the paper. Most districts in our region are looking at models that divide the K-12 population into two groups. They typically refer to them as A and B. And then half of the population in either one of those groups would attend on any given day. And there would be some sort of rotation of those groups through the course of a week or over weeks. And then, once you've determined that, then districts are determining if space and staffing allow for any grade levels or groups to attend every day. So both the A group and the regroup, could they attend every day? And how does one determine that? So this is the process that we and all the districts around us have been going through for the last few weeks and we're still going through. The state makes this another important point. This has everything to do with preventing further spread of the virus. Obviously, little is more important than that. In the elementary schools, we are asked to work in cohorts that would be fixed throughout the day, which is something that we can do in the elementary model and that we plan to do. Students would be in a small group, that number of 12, or in some cases, perhaps even a little bit smaller, depending on the, on the class breakdowns. And students would stay with that group throughout the day. And frankly, stay in their room for a large part of the day. You know, perhaps taking a break to go outside for recess, if it's possible. But otherwise, staying with their cohort, that's what's recommended, that's what's advised. So specials teachers, for example, would travel into the room rather than the students traveling to another part of the school to experience their special, all in order to try to maintain or try to limit the amount of mingling that occurs among students so that the virus does not have any opportunity to spread if and when it enters the school. It just stays within that cohort to try to minimize any further need to have larger numbers of students stay home, for example, if the virus enters the school. So that's cohorting at the elementary. That's the model that we are looking at and that all our neighboring districts are looking at. In secondary schools, of course, that becomes much more challenging because of all of the changing of classes that students do throughout the day. So one of the goals there, the districts are attempting, if possible, but I have to say right off the bat, it's very, very challenging. but I have to say right off the bat, it's very, very challenging to do it, is to try to reduce the number of daily class meetings. So I'm sure most people know our middle and high schools are on a nine-period day. And we've been working very, very hard to see if it's possible while still allowing our students to keep all of their same classes. We know that that's a priority and something that's valued by our students and our community. So we don't want to reduce the offerings to them. But we do, we have wanted to try to reduce the number of daily class meetings. The benefit of that being that again, students would see they, they would travel and mingle with fewer students during the day rather than the larger number that they do when they go through a nine-period day. But I do have to say at this point, we don't, we honestly don't know if we can do that. So we're still trying, but it may end up being a nine-period day, which is allowable within the regulations, we know some other districts are doing that. But we will keep trying and pushing on that a little bit longer to see if we can arrive at something that we would feel even more comfortable with. So now we're going to look a little bit more closely at space configuration in the elementary schools and what's possible. Going back to that question of can there be any grades that come in every day? So we start out looking at our elementary schools, these are the sections that exist for next year. If we were in regular times, these are the sections that we showed to our board through the budget season last year. You can see the totals down at the bottom. Increase has twenty-four sections, KES has twenty, Meadow Pond has seventeen, total of sixty-one. Importantly, the numbers across are important to us in this, in the math that we've been doing lately. So ten sections of kindergarten, ten of first grade across the district, et cetera. So that's where we begin. And then the next thing we do and have been doing is to start to look at space available in the schools. So again, across the top here, you see the current sections that I just mentioned, twenty-four at increase, twenty at KES, seventeen at Meadow Pond. For a full daily in-person environment, each section needs two spaces. Our classes are generally speaking in the low twenties, right? So you divide that number in half, you need two spaces of twelve students each roughly to to meet those social distancing requirements. So then we count the number of spaces we have available in each school, and you can see that number is here. At increased Miller, we were able to locate thirty spaces. And then these others, other larger common areas, twenty-seven at KES, twenty-five at Meadow Pond. That's going through the schools, counting every possible space in which we could put up to twelve chairs that could serve as an instructional space for our students. In order to bring in kindergarten and first grade every day and have the other grades two through five go on an every other day model. We need twenty-nine spaces at increase, we need twenty-seven at KES, and we need twenty-three at Meadow Pond. So you can see, looking here, going up, you can see that that looks manageable in terms of space. That's just one of the considerations. But it looks manageable for us to bring in K one. Once we go to K two, which is something, you know, we, we would want to bring as many as we could in every day. But you can see now, we do start to exceed the number of spaces we have available. Unless we start to consider using these other spaces also. The gym, the cafeteria, computer lab, and, and we have not ruled that out. But it has other ramifications, as you can, I'm sure quickly imagine in terms of what's able to happen in the school during the school day, we're still hoping that we might be able to run PE classes when, where we have some concerns about bringing groups of kids, students together in the cafeterias. So essentially where this leads you, the calculus is that we're comfortable with K one in terms of space. K two becomes more challenging within the existing schools. Perhaps not impossible, but very, very challenging. And the school starts to really be at its, at its bursting point once we get to that number. So then we do start to think about other things. So now you know everything that we know about what our schools are able to hold. So then we do can make, we do have other considerations. And these probably won't be a surprise to anybody. We've been looking at Lewis Barra Elementary School. We absolutely wanted to do our due diligence to see what would at least would be possible there. And in the available space in that building, we think we could hold around about two hundred students, you can see there at the top. We just recently, very recently, had our architect go through the building. The building obviously hasn't been used for some years. There would be some necessary fire code upgrades, some other work that would need to be done. And you can see there some fairly significant projected costs. The hundred ninety thousand dollars being the bare minimum just to get fire code upgrades in place so that the building would be usable. The four hundred and eighty, eighteen thousand dollars represents work that the architect would recommend be done, but not necessarily would say has to be done in order for it to be used. So a lot to think about there in terms of the use of that building. And then, and that's not the only piece of it. We don't know the timeframe. And whenever you do construction in a school, you have to go to the state Ed Department for approval. They've, they have indicated that they will rush these kinds of requests, given what's happening in the world. So that's, that's positive. We also don't know though, given the scope of the work, how long it would take, when it would be completed. We don't have any estimate yet for technology upgrades. And we would need to do further study of both staffing and transportation challenges to really determine whether Lewis Barra Elementary School is a realistic use or not. But we did absolutely want to look as closely as we could to know whether it was an option that was on the table for us or not. So you can see there, it's a challenging option, I guess I would put it that way. It's not, I, I wouldn't rule it out altogether, but there's a lot to be considered before we would think about using that in order to bring back another grade. So then another thought becomes John Jay Middle School. John Jay Middle School actually does have more spaces available than the high school. You can see there in the first bullet point, it would require us to combine current middle school teaching spaces to, in order to free up space for perhaps half the population of one of the elementary grades that would come in on that every other day basis. This also still requires some further study of various staffing challenges as well as further study on the impact of the middle school itself before we would be able to determine whether that's a viable model for us or not. But again, the concept would be a grade, perhaps the fifth grade could come up from all three of the elementary schools, and that could potentially free up enough space in those elementary schools so that we could then be more certain that we could bring in grades K one and two on an everyday basis rather than just grades K and one. So we wanted, we're not ready to say tonight that any of these things are definitive. We're confident about K one. We wanted people to be aware of what we're looking at in order to try to consider K two. And here's some of the other considerations. When we talk about splitting the classes in order to have them in a socially distanced environment, we need additional staff. And the kindergarten, we're fortunate in our kindergarten that every kindergarten classroom, in addition to the classroom teacher, already has a teaching assistant in the room. And so splitting those classes into two spaces, you already have the adult supervision that you need to have one person in each room. But that's not true once you move up into these grades. So we've tried to estimate the cost here of what we think each additional person would need, would, would, would cost the district in order to provide supervision in a second space for half of the class. And you can see there very quickly those numbers add up. We've put down the number there with what we think is a more concrete possibility for the first grade. It's still a little bit more questionable for the second grade, you can see the second grade is one section smaller, which is why the total number is a little bit smaller for second grade. But that's another factor that we consider. At the very end of tonight's presentation, we will do some more summing up of various costs. And you'll see these included in there. Now we're going to just take a, a much quicker look at the secondary schools. Quite as much to talk about there, both the middle school and the high school in terms of space do have space available for half the student population in a socially distant manner. As I mentioned a second ago, the high school is tighter in terms of space than the middle school, which is why we're considering that move that we just talked about for the elementary schools. But we, we know we have space available for the every other day model. Unfortunately, we don't have space available for the everyday model. So now I'm going to turn over to my colleague Mary Ford, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the instructional models that we are looking at.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Mary.
So this evening, in the next few slides, I'll be talking about the instructional models as Andrew mentioned. I'd like to thank the academic subcommittee in particular of our reopening task force. They were really helpful, they've been working on a voluntary basis throughout the summer, meeting weekly and working in between meetings on all of this. So I really want to say thank you and thank you to all of the teachers and community members who have given us some feedback as well, so it's been very helpful. As we designed these schedules, we have been thinking about those three things that Andrew mentioned earlier. Flexibility, continuity of learning and quality. So those are things that we've been keeping in mind as we've designed these models. So we, as Andrew mentioned before, we have this A B model. So, and many school districts are thinking this way as well, so every grade would be divided in half. We would make an effort to keep siblings together regardless of the greater school. This way, we, we believe that that would support most families in terms of any childcare issues. If there isn't space for the entire grade level, then group in group A is learning in school, group B would be learning at home. And when there is space, group A might be in one room and group B in the other, and the teacher would go back and forth between those two rooms. So this is a model of what one class would look like. So the next few slides, we'll go, we'll take a look at a class and then perhaps a sample of a student's day, what that would look like, and then look at a week as well. So in this instructional model, the green segment is that synchronous instruction. So Andrew spoke earlier about that substantive interaction that the state is encouraging us to have lots of. And so we feel that's very important daily, we heard that from our families and from our students as well and all the surveys and focus groups we conducted. So that's when there would be either live streamed or pre-recorded lessons. But those lessons would be recorded or saved for asynchronous use because we also have to keep an equity lens in mind as we look at all of this. So there, it may be a small number, but there may be some students for whom the synchronous schedule won't work well. So we have to make sure that they have access to the instruction as well. But students at home and at school would have the same experience. So that direct instruction would be the same, no matter whether you're sitting in the classroom with your teacher. You may be in a different room in the school building and your teacher is down the hall, or you may be a student who is at home at that time. And then another part of the class time would be student independent work. So that would be focused on the application of the previously taught content, strategies or skills. But while that's happening, the teacher is also conducting scheduled small groups or individual meetings that provide feedback, guidance and support, and perhaps even reteaching in some cases. But the students at home and at school may have some varied experiences. So there may be a day where I'm a student who's working and then I have a small group that's scheduled halfway into my independent work time. Or I may have a one-to-one with my teacher at the very beginning of that time or perhaps at the end. And there may be days where some students are just working independently. If they're in school, we know that we would have a teaching assistant or some other adult who would help to guide them in that other space. But if they're at home, they might be working more independently, but with a schedule of meeting time with the teacher. And again, this is just for illustration, there are some classes that might look a little bit different. I know in some conversations we've been having, for example, with our art teachers, like that might look like a very different model. They might be working on an art project longer term and there might be more interspersed coaching through those one-on-ones or small group. But the, and the upfront in some classes might look a little bit longer or different. So this is just an illustration of what a sample day might look like. So thinking about that previous slide where the green is the synchronous instruction and the blue is the independent work, that would occur multiple times daily for each subject. So this is just one example of what it could look like. The schedules, even the number of subjects that students have in a given day might vary by level and even by individual student. But just to give you a glimpse of the concept, they would have several interactions with their teacher that are synchronous, multiple times per day, once per subject. Hopefully they'll have some break built in there as well, and that would occur for each class. And then taking a look at the overall schedule for the week. So if we're looking across the week, we'd have all K and one students at least at this point, we know that much in school. And we would have, for example, on a Monday, we might have group A. We have some of our students who receive special services and some of our E and L students who might be coming more frequently as well. And then group B in grades two through twelve would be at home. But they would be having that continuous experience where they'd be experiencing that synchronous part at the same times as their classmates who are in the school building. And then that would flip for Tuesday. We're planning on one day of remote learning, here we have it illustrated as Wednesday. We've also talked about having that on Monday as a possibility. That gives us the ability to keep the days of the week you know, consistent. And we think that that will help our families. It also in the beginning of the year is very helpful to us in terms of providing the necessary professional development that our teachers will need time for collaboration and planning and coordination. Because as you might imagine, the consistency across different classrooms will be of heightened importance as we go into this model. So again, the continuity and the flexibility, I think flexibility will be the word of the year. We want to make sure that no matter what, we are prepared for a change at any time. So some of the things that, you know, we've put in place over the past few months that have been really helpful. We know each student will have their own device. And those devices will go home with them in the evening. So that, you know, for health and safety reasons, we're not sharing devices, but we're also prepared to go to a more digital environment when we need to. But if we have this schedule, whether we're in school, hopefully at some point we're in school with everyone at the same time, these same schedules can be maintained. So there's no disruption in that way. And the, the standards and quality, this is a really important piece to us. Our curriculum continues to be aligned with all of the New York State learning standards that will continue. And then we also always aspire to meet the ideals of our learning commitment. So things like relevance, it truly engaging, intellectually engaging opportunities for students and that active learning environment, which might look a little bit different in a distance environment. But we want students to be active learners, we want them to take an active role in their learning, we want them to manage their own learning, advocate for themselves, and we want our teachers to help them in that process. There'll also be higher expectations and accountability for all students, for example, grades will return. And we will be paying special attention to the social and emotional wellness of all. So that's something that in the New York State Guidance Document, they encourage us to pay strong attention to, and we agree. You know, we know that students have been through a lot, our families have been through a lot, our faculty have been through a lot in the past few months. And getting used to being back in the school building, just that can be anxiety-producing. So there's a lot to think about when we think about social and emotional wellness. And I know we had a conversation back in January, I believe, with the board about our social emotional learning initiatives and the importance of emotions in cognition. And we have to keep that in mind as we go. So we want this experience to be comfortable and high quality for all of our students and for our teachers as well. You know, we have to pay attention to supporting our teachers in a very, very new kind of environment that we're all figuring out as we go along. We think we've come a long way since, I believe it was March thirteenth, when we had that first professional development day. And we thought we'd be back on Monday and we're still not back in schools. So lots has gone on and everyone will need our support, so we need to pay special attention to that. And, and a big question for many, many parents, and I think it's been on the minds of many, is can I choose to keep my child home every day? So, you know, the models I've described, we're paying lots of attention to health and safety, but there still may be some families who don't feel comfortable. So we believe that the model that we've developed will work whether students are at home or in school. When we can confirm the exact number of students who may make that choice, then we'll be better able to determine how we might do that. So if there are just a few students in every classroom, it might be more manageable. So if there are just a few students in every classroom, it might be more manageable. But there is a large difference in terms of the experience a student might have who comes to school, say a few times a week versus a student who doesn't come to school at all. So there's a difference in the child's experience. There's also a difference in terms of the planning and preparation the teacher has to do. So we don't know if we might be able to dedicate some staff to students who make that choice. If indeed we do have many students who make that option. And we need to know where the students fall in terms of their grade levels and course choices at the upper levels as well.
Thank you very much, Mary. So I'm going to go back now and start to talk about some of there are many. Obviously, there's a lot of consideration to issues of health and safety in the guidance from the state, from both Department of Health and State Ed. We're going to touch on some of these tonight. When you see the plans will be published on our website tomorrow. You'll have the opportunity to go through them in more detail. You'll see that there's a lot of writing to read through in each of these areas. But we just wanted to give you a little bit of a sense tonight about each of the ones that you see here on the screen. So there will be time devoted at the beginning of the year. This is part of the state's regulations. Time in school to familiarizing staff and students with all the new safety procedures that will be in place. We'll also be providing reminders throughout the year. They'll be going home, there will be signs up in our schools and we'll be emailing regularly. But in the first few days of school, we will be devoting quite a bit of time to make sure that everybody understands the expectations and the responsibility, the shared responsibility that we all have to keep one another safe and well. That's obviously incredibly important so that we can stay, most importantly, so we can stay well, but also so that we can keep our schools open as long as possible. That's the goal. Social distancing, we've already mentioned, it's a key component. We will be setting up in a six-foot structure to the greatest degree possible. Classrooms are all being set up in that manner. That's what determines the numbers. We'll have directional signs to foster distance movement throughout the buildings. Students, and there are going to be a lot of things that students will have to get used to that will be quite different than they've been in the past. So where students may be used to congregating in hallways in between classes, that kind of thing won't be possible in this environment because we can't cluster in that way. So students will be moving directly from one class to the next. Arrival and dismissal times will be supervised and structured to promote distancing as much as we possibly can. And common areas, if they used at all, and we're not sure yet whether they need to be or can be. But if they are, and in limited quantities, they'll be set up in a socially distant manner also. Face coverings. There's been so much written about how important it is for all of us to wear face coverings. They are strongly recommended by the New York Department of Health at all times. You can see that there, and we will be requiring them for staff and for students at all times. You can see the exceptions down there. Obviously, when eating, there will be breaks built in during the day so that students can take a break. And we recognize that there will be individual cases where a physician might identify the need for a child who simply is not able to wear face covering. But we expect those to be relatively few. So for the vast majority, this will be the expectation. We think that's a very, very important way to maintain the health and safety of all. There will be training around that. And we will have them, we will be providing them for our staff. We will have them available for students should they lose them. But we will be asking families to send their children to school with a face covering and with a backup each day so that all can be safe in school. This next one, daily health screener, another requirement that comes from the state, makes a lot of sense. We'll be using an electronic screener that all staff and families will submit each morning prior to the start of the school day. It will require a self-check over the relevant COVID-19 symptoms. There'll be a temperature check that will be, in the ideal, it's done at home before coming to school. And there are also questions on there related to any travel to recent, any recent travel to any of those identified hotspots. And anyone answering yes to any of those questions will be staying at home. It's possible that a quick consultation with the nurse could determine that one of the symptoms, you know, perhaps it's an ongoing condition that's clearly not related to COVID-19. It's possible then that someone could be coming into school after that consultation. But initially, the purpose of the screener is to make sure that everyone who comes to school is well. Students will, if they arrive at school without the complete screener, they'll be checked in school. And we're looking at the possibility of doing random temperature checks also, just to be doubly assured that we're all well and safe in school also. So that's the idea of the daily health screener. Hand hygiene, important category. There will be training on this at the start of the year. We've all seen videos, I'm sure, many of them about the appropriate way of doing this. But, and there will be lots of opportunities around the school. According to CDC, soap and water are still considered best when washing hands. But hand sanitizer alcohol-based will be readily available in classrooms and common areas and throughout the school to be used when washing hands with soap and water is not possible. So there'll be signs up reminding about that. There'll be, it'll be recommended at particular times of day and arrival to school, et cetera. So we know again from all the literature that wearing face masks, washing hands, these are some of the best ways to stop the spread. We will be following very strict cleaning and disinfecting protocols. You can see there, those recommended by the CDC and by OSHA, all spaces to be cleaned in accordance with those guidelines. Twice daily sanitizing of bathrooms and C E C listed disinfectant wipes transitioned around for staff and student use as necessary. So lots of attention being paid there. Ventilation is a topic of much interest, so we wanted to make sure we covered it here. You can see again that our architects, our engineers and our facilities department have been reviewing all of our ventilation systems. They've all been cleaned. They're all working to code and to their highest specifications. The filters used in our systems are to the highest specifications allowed for those, for the particular systems that they sit in. You can't put in a filter that that won't function in the system. So obviously, your goal is to use the highest level filter that you can that will work. And we've made sure that we're doing that. All systems will be maintained in good working order. And you can see the line there at the bottom, to the extent practical, we will open windows. It's not, it's not always advisable for a number of reasons. But when it's possible to increase the flow of fresh air, we will use that option too. Tents, we've had a number of questions about this. There've been articles written about it. We are looking at the use of tents, but you can see more there. Not necessarily as instructional spaces for which they actually, given the number of instructional spaces you saw us talk about earlier that we need, these would have relatively limited impact. But we are thinking about them as places for breaks and possibly some eating or maybe independent study. Could, it could be a nice option during the day. They do however, have to be approved by the state education department. There's a process that we have to go through and their cost and availability is a challenge at the moment. So we are, we are absolutely looking at that. And you'll see that factored into the costs at the end when we get there. Transportation, another very important piece. Face coverings mandated for students as well as drivers on the buses. And, but if, if for any reason a student is, again, unable to wear a face covering, then six-foot distancing must be maintained. But otherwise, buses are the one place where the regulations tell us that six-foot distancing may not be maintained at all times for all students. It's distancing to the greatest degree possible. But again, face coverings mandatory on the buses. And buses will absolutely be cleaned after each run. So that's, honestly, that's just some of the health and safety considerations. We didn't want to go through all of it tonight. There's a lot more of it on the website tomorrow. If you choose to go through and read all that's there, you will be getting many reminders about it as we, as we get closer to the start of school. We hope that we're opening and that we have to use those considerations if we get to that place. And there'll be trainings on it at the start of school if we should be here in September. So now just a slide on some of the financial considerations. So the first number there at the top, that's the one we put earlier on in the presentation. The $265,000 is necessary for those additional staff to bring in the first grade so that they can be divided into two spaces. The $503,000 number would be if we're able to bring in both first and second grade. That's in order to have staffing supervision in alternate spaces for both of those grades. We are anticipating the need for additional sub-coverage throughout the year. We can't know it for sure, but we anticipate that we will have more than usual absence is for reasons that are probably obvious. We hope that it's not the case, but it might well be. So we wanted to be sure to calculate that number down there. You can see the number there for tents that we're looking at. These obviously need to be relatively sturdy tents that will be safe for students and staff to be under. So we are investigating those costs. A significant cost and one, some of, some of the dollar numbers up here are potential costs, but this next one is not a potential. This is an absolute cost, the P P E. The numbers actually that we have to maintain are all mandated to us by the state. But we're, we're happy to exceed those. We want to make sure we have enough of these supplies for everybody. So you can see there that we're anticipating a cost of about $35,000 per month to make sure we have good supply of the face coverings, the gloves, the disposable gowns, the shields, cleaning supplies, et cetera. So with the 10-month school year, that's another $350,000 cost. And then down there at the end, and that one, and that one is a potential. It may or may not be necessary or may or may not happen, the renovation at L E S with both a low and a high. So then there's a low and a high total there. Again, not that we will necessarily be spending all that, but we wanted to give the board a sense of what could be and some numbers to think about and possibly talk about tonight as we approach the year. And I think that might take us here. I did, I did want to end again with some, some comments. You know, we're in, obviously, continued to be in difficult times. We really are eager to welcome students back. But honestly, we would say in whatever form school takes, we look forward to beginning again with our students. It, this is an opportunity for us to model for them, how a community together tackles its most challenging obstacle. I don't know that any of us have ever had a challenge quite as hard as the one we currently face. School will be different in many ways, but it will still be coming together for the sake of learning and growing and caring and striving towards one's greatest potential. Whether we're online, whether we're in person, whether we're something in between, that will be our goal. There still remains a lot that we don't know. I think it's probably pretty clear from the slides tonight. There are some decisions that we haven't finalized. What I'd say about that is we could have finalized some of those decisions by now. By now, we could have, you know, cut off the thinking in order to meet the state's deadline. But honestly, we, we're trying to push for the best that we possibly can. And rather than just say to ourselves, well, the plan's due tomorrow, so let's just stop our thinking here and be done with it. We want to take a little bit longer. We think we're giving the state enough information based on what we know we can do and what we think we might still be able to do. I hope that we've given the community a good enough sense of what most likely scenarios are. But again, I really can't say enough about the likelihood that conditions may change in the coming weeks. We don't know what the governor will have to say next week. As I said in the letter to the community, was it just the beginning of this week? It feels like a month ago, on Monday. You know, we have an important role to play here in terms of our own behavior and decisions that we make over the next few weeks. Obviously, there are places in the country that are really struggling much more than we are right now. We obviously hope for the best for all of them. But we know we have this mandatory quarantine in place for our own state if we choose to travel and then come back. And that's there for obvious reasons. So we all want to be mindful of that. And we want to create the, the best environment we can here that creates the greatest likelihood of us being able to open and, and continue with school. Whether or not that happens, yet to be seen. Whether or not it's the right thing to do, I would say, is yet to be seen. I think the governor is intentionally moving slowly. He wants to make the decision as close to time as possible so that he has as much information in front of him as possible. I think that's understandable. But of course, we need to be planned well in advance of that, which is why we have these different options on the table. We have planned in such a way that we can pivot from one model to the other as necessary. So we're ready, I think, to hear his thinking. And then we'll certainly be ready to welcome students in whichever form it is. As Mary mentioned, we're very fortunate with all the devices that we have for our students. We're very fortunate with the support of our community. We're incredibly fortunate with the dedicated staff that we have. But no one should underestimate how hard this is. As I said at the beginning, there's lots of compromises here. I don't, I don't think, you know, if we were just trying to create the ideal educational environment, it wouldn't be what we've described to you tonight. There are obviously compromises to try to promote health and safety. And that's why we can't bring in all of our students, understandably. So there are compromises. But nonetheless, we think we've done good thinking and planning and we'll move forward from here. So now that's enough talking for me. I think the next slide hopefully just says, are there any questions? And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Mary, for the overview. And thank you for your thoughtful framing of the challenge and for helping us see the enormity of the challenge through this presentation and these slides. And thank you so much to all of our staff members who have helped you with this work and put us in this position to have a conversation tonight. I'm sure board members are collecting their thoughts and questions. And I imagine community members are doing the very same thing. And just want to pause briefly here to reassure members of our community who are waiting to speak with us and to share their own thoughts and concerns that we will turn our attention to public forum in a little while. It's a little bit further down in our agenda. We do ask however, that if you use the Q and A functionality at the bottom of your Zoom, please identify yourself and also let us know where you reside. For those of you who've submitted comments already and didn't let us know where you reside, that is okay. We'll, we'll get to your comments. But please be aware that if you submit your comment anonymously, we're not able to read it into the record, the public record. When it is time for public forum, anybody who has submitted a comment through the Q and A, you know, in accordance with what I've just mentioned, you know, it'll be our opportunity to listen to you and to listen carefully to what's on your mind tonight. You know, with that, as I mentioned, I imagine board members have some, some comments, some questions. I also just wanted to thank you for providing the the lens of flexibility, continuity and quality for us to be thinking about as we form our questions and think about what it is that we're trying to accomplish this fall, given all of the competing priorities and challenges. So thank you for suggesting that lens. And with that, you know, I want to open the floor to my board colleagues for some thoughts and questions for anybody who'd like to start, please. Yes, Rory, please, you're muted at the moment.
Thanks, Marjorie, thank you. And thank you, Andrew, and the entire administrative team and everybody else involved. It really was a very comprehensive PowerPoint presentation. But, but the plan I know is even more comprehensive and I really just want to thank everybody. I have one specific question, I think, which you didn't address, which is how either the district or the state plans to monitor how effective all the measures we're taking are going to be and how we will decide sort of what are the specific criteria that will help us to decide that we can continue to have the school open versus close the school immediately? Is it based on number of six students? Is it based on teachers? Is it based on what's going on in Westchester County and so on? I mean, do we have those criteria available? And will we be monitoring it on a regular basis, daily, weekly, to make those sorts of decisions?
Thanks, Rory, that's a great question. Certainly, the answer is yes, will be. You're talking strictly health and safety, correct? You're not talking about monitoring academic effectiveness, health and safety. So we will definitely be monitoring it. We have, and, and the guidance we've been given is that we are to work as closely as possible with Westchester County Department of Health. We have not been given guidance in terms of numbers that would equate to, for example, a closing if we have this many cases. You know, where we, there, you'll see in, in the more complete plan tomorrow, there's guidance of what to do upon a single case. You know, and the kind of contact that we have with the county department of health and the tracing that they would initiate and the contact they would have with the family, et cetera. But there is not any guidance as yet as to. And well, and then, and then, sorry, what I should say is even upon an individual case, we would be having discussions with the Department of Health about the impact of that case on perhaps the cohort that that student might be in or the classes that that student might be in. But there's not yet guidance in terms of numbers that would cause a larger shutdown than that.
Okay, thanks, Andrew.
Sure.
I do have a number of other questions, but Marjorie, I'm I do have a number of other questions, but Marjorie, I'm happy to give other people a, an opportunity to speak.
Well, honestly Rory, while you have the floor, if you want to keep going with a couple of other questions, I think that's fine, please.
Sure, Andrew, you spent a little bit of time talking about the cost of additional staff. And it just struck me that probably every school district is thinking about hiring an additional 10 staff members per grade or whatever it is. Is, is there going to be an issue around availability of staff? So it's one thing to say, we're going to bring back all of these students and we need additional staff at each grade level. Will we be able to find them?
We hope so. We will be doing our best as quickly as possible, but that's, it is a concern. You know, we're not, we're not talking in, at least in those positions of supporting the first grade, for example. We're not talking about hiring certified teachers. Because the primary teacher would be the one who's already our own teacher in one of the rooms and that teacher would move back and forth. So it's more of a support person position that we'll be looking to hire. We're still trying to determine exactly the type of position that would be, the title it would be, et cetera. But yes, that is, it is a concern, the availability and finding people. So.
And then I, I just had one last question and then I'll, I'll pass the microphone. For, so we talked about bringing K and first grade back in full time and potentially second grade. If, if parents choose to keep their kindergarten or first graders or second graders home. Do we have a plan to remotely educate those students who are voluntarily kept home at that grade level?
So that's, so Mary spoke to that a little bit. It, it is, it's a, it's a challenge. We're, we're hopeful that the model that we've designed works to a large degree, even if you're choosing to stay home. We're not claiming that it's exactly the same if you're home every day versus if you're coming in and out on days. Well, actually, actually the question, your specific question is if you're in one of those grades that's in every day. Yeah, that's, that's particularly challenging Rory, that question. So that's a good question to ask. And I would say that really hinges on us learning more concretely how many students that would be who are not coming in. So that's what Mary was saying, we will be going back out to the community again and asking that same question again. Now that you have a sense of what the model is. If it's your decision to not send your child regardless, we, we now need to know that, we'll need to know names, grade levels. And then we can do the math to determine whether we can provide more than we've described here tonight.
If we could possibly just stay on the K1 every day for just a moment, if you don't mind Catherine, was your question connected to that also?
A follow-up to, to the parents, go ahead, Marjorie, and then I'll ask us just to follow up to that question as well.
Okay, I guess I wanted to stay on this through the lens of continuity, quality and flexibility. I think that Rory's question goes to the continuity and flexibility. But I just wanted to also hear a little bit about the quality. I understand some of the important reasons to work as hard as we can to bring our youngest students in every day. But can you speak a little bit to what is happening potentially? When students are not with their classroom teacher, but with this other person who would be hired in a supervisory capacity. But who is not, as you mentioned, Andrew, you know, certified teacher. You know, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, you know, through the lens of what do we want for our students, you know? Is it your judgment that it's better for K1 students to be in our buildings every day, potentially K2 students? Even though I'll say 50% of that time will be spent with somebody other than their primary classroom teacher? Can you just possibly speak to that?
I'm, I'll speak to her briefly and I'll let Mary speak to her more, she's got much more expertise than I do. But, but certainly that's one of the ones that's responsive to the surveys that we referred to earlier. And the challenge that parents indicated that it was parents of our youngest students. To try to maintain the remote learning experience at home as a parent when your children are that age. And you're trying to either log in at certain times or follow, whether it's synchronous or asynchronous. That's the age group that really told us this is most challenging for us. Whereas as they get older, it becomes more manageable. So that's one reason that having them with us in school, we think we can manage that more effectively. But I'll turn it over to Mary, who I'm sure has more insight than I do.
And I think that, you know, it's one of the reasons why we feel like devoting some scheduled time to professional learning is really so important. And that collaboration and coordination, you know, amongst teachers on a grade level, but in this case with support staff as well. Because if everyone is clear on the goal of the lesson, then someone who, for example, is a teaching assistant could coach students. If all the students hear the teacher, some of them might hear the teacher on the screen giving them any lesson. And other teachers are seeing in person giving them any lesson. And then they're going off and say writing, you know, a personal narrative, right? In kindergarten or first grade, so that other person could still coach them through that if they know the goal of the lesson. And they've had some time to be prepared and coordinate with the teacher. That would be the kind of scenario that we would picture for those classrooms, that quality isn't compromised.
That sounds great, sounds hopeful, thank you.
Can I, can I just stay on something there for a minute? Because I'm, I'm very embarrassed by this, but I realized completely left something off the presentation that's actually kind of important. And it's in that area of the professional learning that we need to do with our staff upfront in the school year. So we want to propose to the board tonight, a slight change in our calendar. So as Mary was just saying, there's a lot, this is going to be very challenging work for our teachers. And this, we, we, in order to provide the best quality, we want to support them and provide as much learning as we can, particularly in the early part of the year. So it should have been on the slide tonight, but what we're proposing is that we take one of the staff development days, the day that's currently scheduled in February. And we move it to the front of the year. Some, some other districts already have a couple of staff development days at the front of the year, sometimes even more than that. We only have the one, that Tuesday after Labor Day. So it's our proposal that we would have the Tuesday and Wednesday after Labor Day both be professional learning days. And then school for students would begin on the Thursday there in some form, depending on how that is. So apologies for not putting that on the slide, we'll amend it when the slide gets saved for the future.
Thank you for letting us know and for suggesting that, thank you. That's great, Catherine, did you want to follow up on the same topic of K1?
No, more, first I want to say thank you to the, to the administrators and the educators. Because this is, seems like an impossible task and the amount of time I know that you've put in and, and thought on, on, really, it's daunting. And for all of the answers that you're proposing, I have a million questions, so I'm really going to try to just ask two tonight. When you talk about giving parents the opportunity to stay at home versus going to be a remote learning full time. Or coming in a hybrid model, if that's what we choose, or also asking them if they will have their student on the bus or not on the bus. When they make that decision, what hap, what happens if they change their minds? And can they change their mind? Because that would affect whether or not we can bring K2 in. What happens in October if all of a sudden I decide, well, now I want my children to go to school? That's, that's going to affect attendance a lot.
Yeah. See, some districts were going to have sort of intervals where parents could change their minds. So that would help us to plan for it. So if we picked different time periods where parents could make those decisions. Especially if they were now deciding to send a student in, because we'd have to make sure that we appropriately had space for students. And that they were grouped accordingly. So I have seen that model out where they're going to have different points during the year where parents can change it. And then maybe it's two weeks from that point till the actual schedule changes or something like that.
Okay, thank you, Alice. And one other question, when the B students are home learning, how long, how long will that day be? I mean, is it going to be nine to three that students will be at home on the computer? Will it be live? I mean, you'll actually be in class with the students who are physically there? It won't be recorded, it will be live?
Correct, we're, we're thinking, we're thinking that it will largely mirror the school day for the students who are in school. But it won't be entirely online. So you might be online for the beginnings of classes and then logging off to do other work in between. And then perhaps logging on again at the beginning of a next class and having some direct instruction with the teacher. But then having time off the screen, because again, we don't, we don't, that's a big compromise. We don't favor students being on a computer for six, seven hours in a day at all. And yet we do recognize the importance of them getting that regular contact with teachers and that direct instruction that's so important. So it's trying to find the right balance.
And I think Catherine, if you picture that slide that had the school day and the blue and the, the green, those green times. Are the times when it would be important for students to log on and have that synchronous interaction with their teachers. And then those other times, there might be speckled with some synchronous interaction for a small group meeting or a one-on-one kind of meeting. But it wouldn't be all the time necessarily.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
I've had some dealings with the departments of health, the state level and the county level through all this. And it's nobody's fault, it's staffing and just, you know, the way they were built and the job they have to do now. I would anticipate and plan around there being delays, that you're not going to get an answer from the Department of Health today. What do I do with this student who's positive? There has to be some sort of pre-planned program, because, you know, we're having trouble getting tests done. We're having trouble getting test results back. You know, they're still trying to get everybody their results in a reasonable time. So I, I would just be, whenever you're saying, whenever in the algorithm it says Department of Health. You just have to figure that what if that answer isn't coming right away? What do we do? Sort of have a, have a thing around it. I guess I, I, I can read it tomorrow on the, on the website in terms of what happens if a teacher tests positive at home? What happens if it's midday and they get, they get a fever? What happens if a student gets a fever? Again, just some concrete, you know, if, if the child has to go home, well, what if the parent's not home? You know, so there's, there's things like that have to be sorted out.
I can, I can speak to that briefly, Bill, but you're right, those, those scenarios are all spelled out in the plan. But essentially every school, the nurses area now will be doubled in size from what it typically is. Because there'll be an isolation room in addition to their typical space. So if we do identify someone during the day, that's the location they will go to as quickly as possible. Department of Health parent obviously is called, Department of Health, that district physician is called. And then the student is collected as quickly as possible. If, as, as you said, if they're not able to be collected right away by parent, you know, we would, we would consider a 911 call if necessary, depending on the conditions. But there, there is a priority on not having a person in school.
Yeah, yeah, I was about to say that, and I imagine the state has covered this, some sort of protocols that you're checking their oxygen level. If it's low, you're calling an ambulance, why you're calling the parents? Because it usually doesn't come that fast, that badly that fast, but of course it can. And I guess it's just sort of a, a general plea, you've already mentioned it a few times, that so many of the decisions are compromises. And let's see, and we're trying this dose versus that dose or this, you know. For the students, the teachers, the families, the administrators, the Board of Ed. Be patient, be flexible, it's, this is new stuff for everybody. This is worst case scenario stuff that none of us thought was going to happen in our lifetime. So, you know, if they're trying it one way and it's not ideal for you, try to go with it. And, and you know, everybody's trying, assume good intent and everybody's trying their best.
One of the things we've learned through E S Y, Bill and everyone, is that really we spend a lot of time waiting for results. So, you know, fortunately during this time, it's all been positive. But in the meantime, we've had to have people remain out. So that is one of the consequences that will happen, which could lead to students being home longer than they expected. And not able to do the hybrid model or staff members being home while we await the results and doctor's clearance.
And another worry is, you know, Rory, you mentioned the availability of teachers and teaching assistants that we might hire. But we're really worried about substitutes, because that's a worry right now or pre-COVID, I should say. But it's certainly even more of a worry and there'll be such a demand, we would imagine across districts.
Yeah, I could see that.
Can I, can I ask a question about your thinking around the rotation of the two groups? I, I noticed in this presentation that it was a A B day off, A B. Are you still favoring that over two consecutive days for each cohort? I know that there's some thinking relative to educationally, but I just think from a containment perspective, my understanding. I just don't know how we're balancing those two things. I'm just wondering if you're, if that's fluid still or whether you're feeling more fixed on not having the two day in a row student presence?
It's definitely fluid and that's been, you know, an ongoing conversation. And I say we're, we're certainly not leaning one way or the other at this moment. We even have a third option that's been brought up, the ABBA option, the A B B A. I think one of the concerns, so, you know, I know, when we first thought about it, we did think group A, A, two days, then a day off, thinking about deep cleaning. And then group B, B on the, the next two days. But when we thought that through, we thought that's a lot of time out of school and away from the teacher. If the goal is to bring students in and be with their classmates and be with their teachers. There was a lot of concern educationally about that. And then we kind of played with the A B A B. And at some levels and some disciplines, that seems to work better. There's really not clear agreement on one way to do it. The A B B A was an attempt to keep some classes, especially at the secondary level, the way the schedules worked. It seemed to be a better fit and like those students who were in the B group would be closer together. And the A group would be on either side of the weekend, so it wouldn't be as long in between. So we're still discussing it, but we've been talking through the pros and cons of each model.
While the conversation has shifted to the secondary level. You mentioned at one point that there are some benefits from a public health standpoint to reducing the number of class periods in the day for our secondary students. And you mentioned looking into a model whereby secondary students would possibly have five class periods instead of nine. And I noticed in the mock-up presentation, that was what you laid out. Can you talk a little bit about the barriers to implementing that plan?
It's, it's very challenging. So the barriers are, number one, that the schedule was already built. And it takes many months to build the high school master schedule, you know, starting in February typically and going through April, May timeframe, I think. If not later than that, actually. Because it's a, it's a very layered piece to try to get all of those requests that students make and, and all of the needs. Including special education needs and everything else that gets layered into building that schedule. So you, you're beginning with a schedule that's already built. And that means that students are in courses and the courses have many different meeting patterns. Some of them meet just once a day each day, but some of them, for example, science classes have double periods that meet at different times. Some of them meet on an every other day basis. And so when you start trying to break, and, and there were also lunch periods built in during the day. So when you start trying to break that up into over two days, for example, and you put periods one through five on one day and periods six through nine on the next. You can, you start to end up with a number of different, very unusual and not necessarily favorable configurations. You could end up with very large blocks of empty time for students on certain days. I feel like we just lost, we just lose Marjorie there off the screen? Maybe, I don't know. Anyway, it's, it's very challenging to get the, the meeting patterns correct and in the same way. And our, our secondary team has been wrestling with this really hard for a while. And we're just not quite sure yet. So we'll keep at it a little bit longer, but then if we do have to go with a nine period day, we will. And, you know, we'll make that work. We know other districts are, are already have reached the decision that that's what they'll be doing.
And even that has its challenges, even though it may be simple, just even dividing into two groups. Try to get families on the same schedule and to divide it in such a way that, you know, an alphabet cut just doesn't work. Because then in some courses you end up with 17 students on one day and three on another. So it's, it's going to take a lot of work to get the students into two groups that will work for families, K12, and then for the student course loads.
Andrew, in a, in a, the, I can't believe I don't remember this, but the high school is on a four day week or a, right there? There are, how many days is there?
It's, it's mostly an even odd schedule at both the middle school and the high school. But the middle school does some courses that run in a four day cycle, including the science lab and the additional period of math. In grade eight and the high school is mostly an even odd, although peer group actually runs on a six-day cycle. There are lots of little nuances.
So I mean, does that, does that potentially mean that if we are doing a single day per week, single rotation of courses? No, so there'd be two rotations each week of your courses. So if you had something on every fourth day, you would have it potentially only every other week. Is that?
Right. That, that actually don't have a course that meets that way, Julia. It might be an additional period. So if it's I would still have math in a very regular pattern. It might just be that additional, that extra.
Extended period or wherever it's called. Okay, okay. And can I ask one more question? In terms of just, I think we normally receive schedules, et cetera, like a week before school starts. Do you feel that everything that you need to figure out will delay that? Or is there any possibility that we would have it earlier just from a planning perspective? Or is it, I mean, I, I realize you guys are down to the wire and I'm totally sympathetic, but I think in terms of managing expectations and for planning purposes, is there any, do you have any sense of when you might know that stuff?
We know the, we know the importance of the day of the week schedule for families, especially regarding childcare. So it would be our hope to get that accomplished first. The detail of the schedule might come very similarly to when it does, but at least parents would have a, an expectation of when their children would be physically attending school. So at least we could get people, give people an opportunity to get childcare in place.
And can I just have one more question? Sorry. And then I'll be done. So it's, it looked to me in the, in the elementary K to two potential, that it would be a question of three additional classrooms at both Increase Miller and Meadow Pond. Is that, is it, I mean, that's probably a very simple way to look at it. But is that, is that accurate?
I'm looking back.
So I think it was 33 and we only have 30 and 30 and we only have 27, if I remember it correctly.
I think it was Meadow Pond.
Yeah, it's, it's around about those numbers, I think.
Okay.
Three and two, something like that.
I'm not sure whether other board members were waiting with questions or comments. If I could just briefly go to transportation for a minute. I just can't remember whether we have bike racks for kids to lock their bikes at our schools or whether we've given any thought to installing them. If we don't, seems like a great opportunity for some students who might not be inclined to take the bus or families who opt not to utilize the buses under these circumstances for families where it's safe to have their kids biking to school. Might alleviate some drop-off issues. And kind of also just in an infrastructure vein, I understood what you were saying about tents being used possibly for these alternative purposes, which is great. And I appreciate you looking into that. And just in thinking about where instruction is taking place throughout the day and thinking about how none of this is really all or nothing, that would we be encouraging a culture of bringing students outside for some instruction on a very routine basis as practicable? Given what we know about the public health benefits of being outside and how that reduces transmission, you know? Are we imagining that culturally we would be encouraging better utilization or more utilization of our outdoor spaces throughout the day or not really?
It's a, it's a great question and a challenging question, Marjorie. I mean, I've, I've been reading a lot about the nineteen eighteen pandemic and what schools did in those times and that there were lots of classes outside. Of course, they were very different times in many ways in terms of the population that came to school and in terms of what we knew about other illnesses that children suffered from and that families are concerned about. So it, it, you know, it's, it's a somewhat family-specific situation. There are families that don't want their children outside for lots of other reasons. And some of those are the same reasons why we don't necessarily want to be opening the windows all that often in some of our classrooms, right? So there's, there's just other concerns to, to keep in mind. So I think, I think you'll probably see some of that happening. I don't know that it's something that we'll be seeing on a large scale.
Okay. I appreciate that. If I can just stay on that for one minute with regard to our infrastructure again, and thinking about the, the chart that you showed about the number of classrooms and other spaces and just thinking about our gymnasiums. Can you provide a little bit more information from a pedagogy standpoint and an instruction standpoint around how the gymnasiums will be utilized for physical education or whether they would be used for physical education or whether phys ed would move outside?
That's exactly the equation I think that we're looking at, right? I mean, you, you want to hold on to some opportunities for kids to move and they, in order to do that, they've got to be pretty spaced out from each other. So on a bad weather day, you know, the gym is potentially a resource area for kids, right? If the, if the weather's not good enough to go outside or, and so you, you, you give up that space somewhat reluctantly to put 15 desks and chairs in there. And yet, if that allows you to bring another grade in every day, then there is some benefit to that. So we haven't, we haven't reached a decision yet on that. We're still looking at the best way to provide phys ed and some other things.
We need a lot of guidance still, I think, on shared equipment among students because that's also gonna, like, I love the idea of just having space for kids to spread out in the gym, which is so nice. But on the other hand, if we're bringing them into a space and there isn't a lot they can engage in anyway, because they can't share a basketball.
Yeah, no, that, that really was more, my question was just from a pedagogical standpoint, you know, we can talk about certain subject areas and how learning is going to be different in the future, but I, I really was just wondering whether we had guidance on how physical education is going to change and to what extent we would be using our gymnasiums and how. But we don't have to go further down that path tonight. I just seeing, seeing those spaces called out on the chart created questions, other questions, I guess, as, as we have on many topics. Are other board members waiting to comment? Yes, Catherine, please.
All right. When you talk about shared space and touching basketballs, it reminds me of what about bathroom use? Like many of the schools I know have, you know, a bathroom in the hallway. How are you gonna, if a fifth grader is using the bathroom and it's, and a second grader, how, how are you going to be able to figure that out? That there's only one child in the bathroom at a time?
I will say it's not all resolved, but when I walked through Increase Miller, for example, with Carrie Ford, that was very much on her mind. And we literally went into every bathroom and we're looking at the number of stalls and talking about how to assign time or space to different classrooms, just even as part of contact tracing. So it's not all resolved, Catherine, but it's definitely something that's being thought about in the planning.
Thank you.
Are questions or comments at this time? Okay, if not, I know we're gonna have, oh, yes, please.
I just had a question. So kind of in, off of like the whole infrastructure conversation. I was just wondering if there would be, are there going to be changes made within buildings to promote kind of safe travel from one class to another or like in the secondary schools or ways to make sure that students upon arrival to school are able to not congregate in certain areas or ways to kind of not have students do that? Like, will there be? What's the, I forget, like, determ, not deterrence, I'm so sorry, deterrence from congregation in the hallways and travel spaces?
It's a great question, Sawyer, and certainly something we've been thinking about a lot. So there'll be, there will be, there'll be signs and there'll be directional arrows and some of the things you're used to seeing. For example, when you go to the supermarket now and you walk a certain direction down one aisle and a certain direction down the other. And then there'll be people supervising also, hopefully getting people into new habits from what they're used to being in and not congregating. We're thinking quite a lot particularly about arrival times and dismissal times and which, which entrances we can use and where we can have supervision, getting people used to coming in at particular doors and always coming in at those doors and figuring out their direct path to their first period class, for example, those sorts of things. So there, there definitely will be changes in habits and behaviors and it'll happen in a variety of ways.
We've also, sorry, Sawyer, needing to engage student leaders in helping make this a positive experience, right? So the more that the older students set the tone for this is something that we want to do to keep our community safe. Hopefully the more students that will be willing to follow suit and because of the example set by older students who are modeling that this is a good thing because the longer we can stay in school, the better. And if we don't follow them, then perhaps a shutdown comes sooner than we hope. So maybe we can engage with campus Congress at some point about how to support you all in helping us to lead that.
Also, would you ever consider staggering the start times and dismissal times of the school days? If like less students are taking the bus, then there would need to be more, there would be more traffic in front of the schools for parents picking up or students driving home. So would you ever consider staggering the start times and dismissal times?
We, we are, we are thinking about that, Sawyer. We, we know of at least one other district that's making a distinction between when buses leave and all the students riding the buses leave and then students who get home in other ways. So we're at least looking at that as a model.
And there might be some other natural ways, Sawyer, that if someone has a study hall or they don't have a course that starts first on a particular day, if they had access to their own transportation where they might arrive late and similarly at the end of the day where they might leave the campus early.
If there aren't any other questions or comments right now, then I think I'll suggest that we move on to our next agenda item. We, we really thank you for all of the work and planning and thoughtfulness that's gone into reopening plans so far. We know there's more to come. And I suspect we'll be revisiting the topic in, in just a few minutes. For the time being, again, just a reminder to community members who are waiting for public forum, when you submit your comments, please let us know who you are. Please identify yourself and let us know where you reside. We're going to first turn our attention to the opportunity to establish the tax levy for the 2020, 2021 school year. And I'm going to invite Danell Placella to provide an overview of the next resolution that's available to the board in just a moment. Thank you, Danell.
Thank you, Marjorie. So the business office has been very busy this summer as well. Not only are we gearing up for the reopening and all that goes along with that, but we've also been working hard to close our financial statements for 2019, 2020. Before we get to the tax warrants, I'd like to go over our year-end fund equity and how that relates to setting the tax levy. So to start, the district ended the year in in a very positive position. Our fund equity has increased by $4,419,760 from last fiscal year. This is, this of course is an un-audited number. Our auditors will be onsite next week to audit all this information. Our fund equity consists of three components. Our first is our reserves, which we refer to as restricted. We also have designated funds. These are non-spendable and assigned funds. And then finally, we have an unassigned funds, which is also known as our fund balance. So on June, June 18th, we increased some of our reserves to be used in the future years in a fiscally responsible way. The biggest increase to our reserve was to our TRS sub-fund reserve. We increased that $873,686. You, you may recall that this was a new reserve permitted by the state just last year. So we continue to fund that to the maximum allowable level permitted by the state. This will help ease the burden to taxpayers in future years when the teachers' retirements rates fluctuate. Finally, another reserve that's worth mentioning is our reserve for encumbrances. This is an accounting reserve. There are items that we budgeted for in 2019, 2020. And then for some reason, we weren't, we weren't able to complete the work. Whether it was COVID-related or vendors not being able to perform the work. So we carry over those anticipated expenses to the 2021 budget. So that represents $588,616 increase to our fund equity. Also during the budget discussion, we proposed to offset our tax levy by using two sources. The first was using $750,000 from our reserves. The board also approved that on the June 18th meet, make meeting. And then tonight we are also proposing of designated funds to help offset the tax levy. So that totals $3200,000. This designation represents a million dollars increase from what we designated last year to offset the tax levy. So that also contributes to that $4.4 million increase in fund equity. The final classification of fund equity is known as our undesignedated, unreserved fund balance. The state requires that this be capped at 4%. This year, the undesignedated, unreserved fund balance is a little bit higher at 4.91% or approximately $1.1 million over that 4% constraint. I've conferred with our auditors on this regarding the given uncertainty of our state aid due to us for both 1920 and for projected shortfalls in the 2021 school year. They are informing districts to help plan for them, plan to meet the anticipated potential deficits in in revenue that to move forward in these unusual times with that. So in other words, it's your budget is like a scale. So we have expenses and in order to balance our expenses, we have revenue to offset. So we're anticipating that state aid will not come in as we projected during budget season. So that 1.1 million will help balance the scales. Without that balance, we would need to hold back on additional spending so that our, because our revenue wouldn't meet our expenditures. I did do an analysis of how we rank with other Westchester County school districts. During our, during budget presentations, all school districts are required to report to the state where they think their fund equity would, would be at year end. So I looked at the 44 other Westchester school districts. I updated our data to what we know as of right now, June 30th, that's we're presenting to the auditors. So with that information, we ranked 16 out of 45 of the other Westchester's districts. But again, this is a little askew because the, the Westchester districts presented their data at what they knew April 30th. And I would assume just like our equity has changed from what we were projecting April 30th to now, that theirs fund equity would be different. I did look at what we reported in April compared to those 44 other school districts. And if you looked at those numbers, we ranked 22 at that point. So we did go a little bit up higher, but I, I think we're going to see a big change in other districts. So all this information gets us to the purpose of the resolution, which is to set our tax levy. In June, the voters voted on the expenditure, expenditure portion of our budget. Tonight, the Board of Ed will approve the primary source of funding for the budget, which is the, the tax levy. I'm happy to say that the tax levy will remain the same as what we presented during the budget season, which is actually the same as the budget, the tax levy from last year. I, I want to make sure that taxpayers know that there may be slight differences in your tax bills. And this has to do with both assessed value and equalization rates and how that is apportioned throughout the, the different towns in our district. Additionally, the tax rates that we Additionally, the tax rates that we presented to the Board of Ed did change slightly from the budget process, but budget discussion, and that's also due to assessed values. Assessed values aren't finalized until June, but they were minor variations from the budget discussion. I think the highest variation was seven cents per 1,000 of the assessed value. So with that, I just want to take this time, I'm happy to answer any of the board's questions regarding the tax warrant resolution.
Thank you so much, Danell. We really appreciate your insight. Thank you for conferring with our auditors. Thank you for the analysis of our fund equity relative to other districts in the region. All of that is really helpful context and we really appreciate your presentation of this information and preparation of the resolution. Do any board members have questions or comments before we move on to 9.03? Yes, Rory, please.
Thanks. Hi, Danell. Thank you so much for the thorough analysis. Just a quick question on the fund balance. So I, I understand why we feel comfortable going beyond the 4% in light of the current situation. Are there penalties imposed for breaching that 4%? Is that 1.1 million in previous years? Would we have been subject to a penalty for that? Or is the, the 4% is not a guideline, right? It's normally hard and fast.
Correct, yes. So during the budget discussions, we had thought we would be going over that 4%. At that time, our association, the Business Officials Association, was working with the state to have that 4% increase to, there was 5%, 6%. Some people were trying, hoping for 8%. Unfortunately, that didn't come to fruition. In speaking with the auditors, they said that they may make a comment on our audit report, but they completely understand we're not the only district that is going through this, that there were some significant savings from transportation costs, heating costs that we recognized last year. And we will, we will definitely hear from it at the audit, but it's not out of what they're seeing with other districts.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you.
I can just reiterate, Rory, that this has been a topic among all of the districts in the region through Westchester Putnam County School Board Associations, just to sort of underscore that all districts are in the same boat, or many districts, I should say, not all, because not all were in the, in the situation we were in with regard to our surplus.
I appreciate that, Marjorie. I just didn't know the state's position. It's, it's likely that they'll be lenient in light of the circumstances, but we don't have any direction specifically from the state saying that they wouldn't, that they would be okay with anything above 4%. So I, I totally understand. I'm fine if the auditors are comfortable and the rest of the districts around us are doing the same thing. That's, that's perfectly fine. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, clarifying questions? Okay. If not, then I think that brings us to 9.03. And this is our opportunity to pass a resolution establishing the tax levy for the 2020, 2021 school year. So I'll go ahead and move the resolution and I'll ask that somebody please second it. Seconded by Bill, thank you. And if there's no further question or comment, then we can vote. All in favor, please say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, six zero, terrific. Thanks again, Danell. We really appreciate that. And now this brings us to 10.01, which is our opportunity for public forum. So again, we invite community members to please submit questions, comments through the Q and A in Zoom. Please identify yourself, tell us where you reside. And just a reminder that this is our opportunity and it's our responsibility to really be in listening mode. Our district clerk, Kim Monson, is going to read your comments to us and for the public record. And although we won't engage in any immediate back and forth, we will be actively listening. And after a brief pause to go through our consent agenda, we will then have an opportunity for board dialogue toward the end of the meeting, which is very soon. And we'll have the opportunity to reflect and, and take up some of your comments and questions. So thank you for being with us tonight and for participating. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kim, if you're ready, and ask you to start reading from the Q and A. Thank you.
Yep. The first comment is from Liz Bickler. I would like to know if there is a plan to address the needs of the youngest students in the district, K2, who have unique needs, quite distinct from those of the, of older students in the district. Specifically, is there a plan to prioritize having the youngest cohort of students in school full-time? If a hybrid model is adopted, as these students are unable to independently follow any schoolwork tasks on their own and are at a critical age where they are learning the fundamentals of reading and writing, which are nearly impossible to teach through distance learning. I'm also curious if the board is considering, considering a bifurcated approach as opposed to a hybrid approach whereby students, parents, and teachers could self-select into either a full-time, full, full-time in-school option or a full-time distance learning option for the coming school year. The hybrid option seems suboptimal for all, while this option would allow both students and parents and teachers to select the option that is best for them, while also potentially naturally reducing the number of students in school, potentially eliminating the need for the hybrid option. Does the full-time option for K1 or K2 consider whether or not there is a significant portion of families who choose to keep their children home regardless of the model adopted? If, say, 20% or 30% of the students choose to not return to school full-time, would that free up enough space to expand the full-time option to K2 with current space available? Has the district considered building a semi-permanent tent structure at any of the elementary schools in order to expand the space available to increase the capacity for children to be in school full-time? Sorry, I'm just scrolling to see if there's any more. Please keep in mind that the rising second graders are significantly behind in learning critical skills due to the inconsistent and disruptive first grade year at a critical time when they are learning how to read and write. I urge the board to consider that the rising second graders are not typical second graders, but greatly behind in their learning due to the mid-year disruption, and to do everything possible to bring the second graders in for full instruction. Has the board consulted with any of the local departments or daycare centers to understand best practices that have been successful with programs that mimic some aspects of school? The Lewisboro Parks and Recreation Department has successfully run town camp safely for over 100 children for over three weeks now, and they have seamlessly implemented safety protocols and provided a fun and engaging environment for campers outside at the town park. Also, the Country Children's Center has successfully run their daycare centers since April, implementing all required and recommended safety protocols and have been successful in providing daycare for many local families. Both of these institutions have done so, managing to keep both children and staff safe. Both are using a POD model and have kept the number of students, campers, lower than usual, but not necessarily six feet distance. This has seemed to work well for young children. I am curious if the board has conferred with either of these programs or others. Okay. Just give me one second. Okay, the next is from Marcie Quackenbush. Will there be an option for families to choose to have their students learn completely remotely if they don't feel it's safe to attend school in person? The next is from Sarah Becker. These options all have the middle school and high school there 50% of the time. Will teachers have a chance to prepare their lesson plans and get educated on the technology before school starts? Typically, there is one teacher prep conference day before the 9:00 start of school. Will we open on time? Has the teachers' union agreed to this plan and are they in agreement to support this? Will they have the option to teach remote only if they have health conditions? Would you ever consider having the math, science, ELA, social studies classes plus languages, language in person and then have the band, music, arts, home and careers, health online, so they get the main academics in person and do the others remotely? So we have a different hybrid and perhaps the kids don't then spend enough time there to have to deal with lunch and that dynamic? If K1 is looking like you will have them there five days, how do you handle those K1 families that do not want to send their kids due to health considerations? Are the K1 teachers supposed to teach their class for six hours and somehow remote in the other kids? The next comment is from Alicia Kempton. What if a child presents with a runny nose and cough at school? Will they be sent home and tested? Will they have to stay home until negative tests come back? If positive, what happens to the other students? Next comment is Jill Kurt-Lancic. Do you plan on opening school on time? The next comment is Claudia Harrington. What happens to a sibling, siblings of a child who is quarantined due to their class having an infection slash exposure? How will a sibling be taught since their teacher will be still be in school teaching all day? Will bus notes allow children to go to other children's houses for playdates whereby negating social distancing? How will schools know if a child, teacher, or staff member has been exposed outside of the school environment? And then what happens to the children in that teacher's class? What if someone who lives in the same house as a teacher tests positive? Does that teacher now need to take 14 days off of work to quarantine? Next comment is from Beth Ersky. You touched on the possibility of parents choosing to keep their children home for remote, remote learning, but didn't definitely say if that would be an option. Will it? Next comment is from Jim Danielwich. It seems that staff will need weekly staff development days. Is this possible? It may be best to have a four-day teaching week and a one-day development day for teachers. Kathy Martin. What level of education and training will teaching assistants have at the elementary level? They will be teaching our children a significant amount of time. This is from the Jacobson family. Has there been a discussion with the teachers about if they feel comfortable coming back? Has the teachers' union been a part of any discussion? Kelly Ox. My name is Kelly Ox. We live in South Salem. Thank you for all that you are doing. I have, I have a child going into first grade at Meadow Pond. From what I understand from the presentation, she will be in school four days a week with one remote day. When will we know for certain which day of the week that remote day is so that we can plan for childcare on those days? It was mentioned that it could be Wednesday or Monday and is fluid. Unfortunately, those of us with smaller children really do need to secure childcare on the off day and turning that around in two weeks may be impossible. Thank you. Next comment is from Geraldine Zikli. With all the space increase scenarios, LES, fifth grade at John Jay Middle School, and gym, etc., as well as students choosing remote only, does the district only anticipate at best getting K2 in full-time? Would you ever get third or fourth grade included? Second, what happens if a child whose grade is full-time needs to quarantine but is not sick? How will they be instructed? There is no consistent remote instructions. Thank you. Cassie Hollander. Will additional nursing, nursing staff be on hand at schools? Thanks for all of your hard work on getting our schools ready. Greg Simmons. Can the district do a one-time tax levy to fund the needed costs for more in-school options? I imagine the tax levy cost would be much less than the cost of childcare for homes with two working parents. If so, what would the levy be? Tom, hold on one second, sorry. Tom Harrington. How will students be allowed to enter and exit the schools during pickup and drop-off? When I dropped off, when I dropped my kids off and picked them up, the students were shoulder to shoulder. If twins are attending school remotely, will they be in the same class? And if not, will lesson plans be the same across a single grade? Ethan and Charlotte Oakley. I am concerned about having kindergarten students wearing masks all day. Are we certain that they will be able to do so? How will this affect their emotional well-being? How will it be monitored? The next comment is Vaughn Roberts. Any measures by the New York State for replenishment of PPE supplies, given that regional country rides are made, causing shortages that into the fall, depending on citizens' adherence to guidelines? Not repeating same shortcomings from quarter one, quarter two for New York State. This is from Karen and Eric. When or how can we let KSD know if we want a full virtual option so you can get a count going? I think, oh, sorry, here's another one. Samantha Holsman. Thank you for the thoughtful presentation and planning. What does a mask break look like? Are, are our students taken outdoors to take off their masks? And if so, are mask breaks weather-dependent? What about quality control for the teaching assistants and continued training? The load on our teachers sounds very overwhelming. What additional support will be provided to them? Thank you. I think I got them all.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you for reading those and thank you to members of the community for staying with us and for submitting your questions and concerns. I think this means we're going to close the public forum at this time and just briefly turn our attention to the consent agenda. And then, as I mentioned, we'll be back to board dialogue in just a minute. So would somebody like to move the consent agenda? This would be 11.01, thank you, Julia, to 15.07, moved by Julia. Would somebody like to second the consent agenda? Thank you, Liz. Seconded by Liz. Were there any discussion items or questions about any consent agenda items? If not, then we can vote. Looks like we can. All in favor, please say aye, raise your hand. Getting some feedback. I'm hoping that's not my microphone. Sorry. I think that was six zero, all in favor. And this brings us to recognition of donations and gifts. This is 16.01. And I'll move this resolution, thank you so much, to Stop and Shop for $1,266.51. And this is going to Meadow Pond Elementary School. Would somebody second the resolution for the gift, please? And this is going to Meadow Pond Elementary School. Would somebody second the resolution for the gift, please? Seconded by Rory. Thank you. All in favor, if there's no further discussion, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Six zero. And I think this brings us to board dialogue. Great. So we're at board dialogue. Again, thank you very much to members of our community for sharing your thoughts and questions. Just give my board colleagues a minute to collect your thoughts. And also to ask whether there were any additional topics for board dialogue tonight, of course. Not just wait until somebody would like to take the floor. Let me know. Thank you, Julia.
So I just wanted to thank everyone who's been involved in putting together the plan and I think for many of the questions that maybe were being written as the presentation was happening, I, I'm hopeful that if community members were able to stay on through the call, that a lot of those were addressed and answered through the presentation. And I think also, you know, none of us have seen the full plan and I think a lot of the more detailed questions, some of the things that Bill was talking about in terms of contact tracing and things like that. Certainly, I think are addressed in the plan. So hopefully even some of those other questions will be answered in the longer plan. But I think the thing that, that we're hearing loud and clear and I think in, at least in the feedback that we've already gotten is just really that desire for you know, for understanding sort of some of the younger grades potential for being in school. I mean, I think we heard that and that's why Andrew's looking into, you know, can we expand that to second grade? And I think that, you know, I think Andrew said something at the very beginning that we all just, this is so much of this is about really working as a community, helping our kids to really understand that like, you know, sort of participating in whatever precautions are necessary is really like, this is a team effort. It's going to be a team effort. And, you know, I just really encourage everyone to, to think of it in that lens, even over the next couple of weeks in terms of where people, if they're out of the area, you know, know that they need to be quarantined, etc. So you know, I think there will, I think the other piece that I just, I worry about is just, I think there's just going to be so many questions all the time and I just think it's, it's emotionally quite a draining time and taxing on all of us and I just, I don't know if we can think about like sort of a forum for Andrew, I don't know, just some kind of like open dialogue for people just to, whether it's something that maybe the PTAs do with their, with their constituents, but just, I think people are going to need an opportunity to just express concerns. And sometimes those concerns might not have answers. So I just think we need to think about kind of, can we create some opportunities for people just to be in dialogue with one another? Help each other solve problems that they're having. So I don't know if that's something that's, I don't necessarily wouldn't put that under the board's purview, but I certainly think it's something we should be kind of thinking about as a district.
I can, I could speak to that a little bit. I think that's a great suggestion, Julia, that one of the requirements from the state is that when the, when the plan is released, that there be opportunity for feedback from the community. So when, when people see the plan online tomorrow, you'll already see a feedback form. That's, that's there and it's a place to send us comments and questions. And I do anticipate we'll get a lot of them. And there's also going to be a frequently asked questions. There's already a space there for it. The questions and the answers are not there yet, but they will be in the coming days and those will be responses to some of the feedback that comes in, you know, as we see themes and patterns emerging, we'll make sure we get answers out as best we can to people. But I think your other point is really good, that there's going to be a lot of questions that we won't have answers to. And it's important for people to be able to express them anyway, and to, to, to just share their concerns. If I could just speak for a moment, I, in, in all of the questions tonight, I heard a lot of concern and appreciation for how hard this is going to be. And what a heavy lift it is for our teachers and a number of questions and comments about whether there'd be additional time upfront and, and we really appreciate that thoughtfulness. And it is going to be really hard. I think there's no getting around that. This is something we've, none of us have ever done before. So just the fact that it's new and different makes it hard. It's going to be hard for the students initially. Our, our goal is going to be make, to make it as enjoyable and as, you know, we want it to be an enjoyable and engaging school experience. But there's no question, it's going to be challenging. And we are mindful of that. And that's one of the reasons we want to move that calendar day. And that those, those days, the fully remote days, we are thinking particularly at the beginning of the year can provide some flexibility where we can provide additional support for teachers because we do recognize they're going to be doing things they've never done before. Sometimes in, in long careers as teachers, you know, we've had a lot of experience doing a lot of different things, but none of us have done this. So I really appreciate how frequently that kind of concern and empathy was expressed in the questions.
I can just also comment on one of the refrains that I heard in several of the comments and questions. I would characterize it as what if scenario planning? And I appreciate your characterization of what we're doing here as new and different and challenging. But it's also there's so much uncertainty around the extent to which we can plan carefully and thoughtfully for as many contingencies as possible, but then butting up against the reality that outside of the school day. Families will have to make and also sometimes by choice will make decisions that greatly affect our ability to do anything, you know, along the lines of what we're talking about here. And that's not anybody's fault. That's, that's the nature of, of what we're talking about. So there's so much uncertainty, not only around, you know, what children will do and with whom they'll play after school, but also around decision making at the secondary level in terms of outside of school activities, you know, we haven't even begun to talk about after school extracurricular activities and the impact of all of this on so many of the dimensions of students' lives that are so important to them and help them to have a sense of identity and outlets and joy and families will, will seek other opportunities. Kids will be in so many other environments outside of our school day and, and we can't control for any of that. With regard to the health, safety and wellbeing of our students, our staff, etc. So, you know, I really appreciate the what if scenario questions tonight because honestly, they just really are a reminder that we've just scratched the surface in some ways here tonight. I'm sorry to say. But also happy to say, because what you've done is extraordinary and the planning is excellent. But yeah, I'm sorry, Liz, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, yeah, I think it's, you've all accomplished an amazing amount of work in a very limited amount of time and I imagine some days it feels like nailing Jell-O to the wall. And I do want to reemphasize, and I think for everyone, everyone just maybe needs to keep hearing this. If we are to be successful, this is going to be an exercise in social responsibility. You know, if, if we are to try and do the best we can for our kids, we have to behave responsibly and do that for the entire community.
Thank you.
She's the good cop, I'm the bad cop. So first, I, I noticed another theme in the questions was also looking for best practices. And I know that in the planning thus far, that has been a big theme of what you've done in terms of meeting with other superintendents, discussing what's going on in other districts. I think that, that those are good suggestions and reassure the community that that is happening. I mean, that, that is one of the methods by which this has all been designed. Unfortunately, even in our community, it might be some resistance to wearing a mask, whether it's based on science or politics. You know, the, the science is very clear that masks work, period, end of sentence, and there's probably going to have to have some, some thought is going to have to be given to what happens if, if a student or teacher or parent who's in the school for any reason says, no, I'm not wearing a mask. And, you know, it's not for health reasons, it's not a medical type of situation. It's a philosophical one. You're going to have to have some sort of process for that as well, I would imagine.
There is, there is already some language to that, Bill, in the plan you'll see tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Any other comments? Yeah, Rory, please.
Marjorie, just, well, maybe it's, it's actually not directed to you at all. I really appreciate all the hard work and I know that we, that there's lots of unanswered questions. There's probably more unanswered questions than there are answered questions. But I can really feel for families with young children who are trying to figure out what their world looks like after school reopens and whether they can go back to work for a five day week schedule and so on. And so I guess my question is, when will we know if, if second grade is included in the schedule and maybe equally important, will it be Monday or Wednesday? Will the off day be Monday or Wednesday for, for all families across the, across the district? It just feels to me like there's a few things that we need to try to nail down or at least give some solid guidance on sooner rather than later. And it did come up in the questions, but it's kind of an obvious one. I just wonder what the next steps are.
Rory, I think, I think is a good question. I'd like to speak to it briefly. I think, you know, what's, what's become clear from the questions tonight, from your good question, and, and it's also becoming clear from colleagues is that we need to make a decision soon on these things. And, and as I said earlier, you know, we, we in a way, the easier thing to do would have been to have made the decision a week ago and said, it'll be K one, you know, we know we can do that. And we've been pushing to see if we could do a little bit more. And you want to do that as best you can because you want to do the best for all the students that you can. But I think what's become clear in the last couple of days and tonight reinforced is that we need to reach a decision soon. I don't want to, I don't want to put a definitive timeframe on that because I think it will be informed by another survey. Fortunately, with the technology, we can now do these surveys pretty quickly. So I think in the next, I know there was a question in there tonight about when that would happen. I will say it'll happen next week. Then we'll go back to families and get some more definitive information and we'll reach that decision at that point. I don't want to, I'm not committing tonight to say it'll be in the next week, but we know we need to make the decision soon. That's very clear for the sake of the families, but also for our own planning.
I would just add to that, Andrew, that while we call it a survey, we really will
Yes.
be family to respond.
Thank you, Alice.
We'll need to know what the decisions are, at least for the opening of school, so that we can put together the best cohort model possible.
Thank you. Yeah, then we'll find a different word. The survey, because you're right, this will be more of a commitment that we're asking for from people.
Thank you, Andrew. That's very helpful. Thanks.
Any other comments?
I guess I just want to, sorry, make one additional comment, which is, I think, you know, the other thing that I think that we just need to always keep in mind is this is still a very active virus. And while we have done a really great job in Westchester County of reducing the numbers, I think the numbers coming back up could happen and I hope it doesn't. But I think that like, I just think it's really important to reemphasize that for everyone's thinking that I think people need to be kind of, as we go through the fall, maybe it will become clearer if we're going to make it to the other side of this without needing to be fully remote. But I do think that it's something that people just need to be keep, kind of keep in the back of their mind that there is a possibility that we, I mean, I think, right, that we could be instructed by the state to be fully remote again. Is that, I mean, do you, and again, I know that's no one's best case scenario, but I do, I do think that's not off the table. Yes.
Nothing's off the table, Julie, I would say. I think, just to clarify for the community, because we do sometimes get that question about whose decision is it? The governor has been very clear that these are decisions made through his executive orders. And that's what determines whether schools close. We, we have the ability locally, you know, if we have, if we have an outbreak to make an individual decision, but by and large, he's been clear about his authority.
Think the model that we described tonight could work whether you have a hybrid environment or a full distance environment and that schedule would be in place. And if we were fortunate enough to be back in school full time, the schedule could work as well. That's our goal is to build something that works across the three scenarios.
There aren't any other comments or questions related to reopening. I just wanted to circle back to something earlier in the meeting and then look forward to our future meetings. So I think in part, Liz, because you dropped off briefly during our discussion of board subcommittees, I just wanted to confirm that you're comfortable serving on policy and sustainability. Thank you. I really appreciate that. And then also just to mention that because we had to close our schools toward the end of last year, some of our subcommittees really weren't able to complete their work in progress and typically over the course of the next couple of board meetings, we appoint community members to work with us on our subcommittees and we wanted to just suggest that the board consider inviting community members who were already serving on our subcommittees to come back and to continue to serve on those same subcommittees in part because it feels as if we're still continuing some of the conversations and the work that we had embarked on last year and that we were still working on in the spring. So although we don't have to make a firm decision right now, it would be helpful to be thinking about this because in terms of the timeline for requesting community participation, we would want to circle back to community members who had been with us on our subcommittees and we would want to be in a position to appoint those same community members to return to the subcommittees at our first meeting in September. So if anybody has strong feelings about not moving forward in that direction, it would be helpful to, to hear that tonight.
There's always the possibility, Marjorie, that people may not want to participate for another year, in which case we, we'd have to find additional, otherwise I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay, thank you. That's well said. Good point. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you for that. And then in terms of looking forward, the board is next scheduled to meet on Thursday, August 20th. Logistics to be determined, I guess I would say. And then our first meeting of the school year would be Thursday, September 10th. And then again, Thursday, September 24th. And unless I'm missing something, I think that brings us to our opportunity to adjourn. Does anybody else have anything to add?
Marjorie, just, just a quick question as you're talking about the format of the next meeting. Are we obligated to meet by Zoom or do we have an option to meet in person if we're going to ask our students and teachers to come back in at the beginning of September? Maybe August 20th, whether we have the option or not, we should consider meeting in person ourselves.
Well, actually, the executive order is going to expire in between now and our next board meeting. So quite frankly, Rory, I envision that we would be meeting in person. I, I'm not anticipating that the executive order will be renewed, however, with so much uncertainty around the governor's decision regarding whether or not we're in a position to come back to school in person. This is why I'm suggesting that for the time being logistics are TBD. Because as you point out, you know, absent a renewed executive order, we would definitely be meeting in person on August 20th. And, you know, it's certainly my hope that that's where we are, but I'm reluctant to over promise.
Okay, thank you.
Marjorie, I just have a clarifying question that I might need Kim's help with this also. And it's, it's about the calendar question of moving that a date. I think we might need a, a board action at the next meeting in August to do that, but I would like to be able to inform the community as soon as tomorrow, perhaps in the letter that I send out when we send the link to the plans that will be online. So that people have advanced notice that there's a change in the start date. I'm, I didn't hear any concern from board members tonight, but I wouldn't want to presume that everybody supports that idea of changing that day. But if But if, if we do, then I could inform the community as soon as tomorrow and the board would make it official at the meeting on the 20th.
I think it would be important to inform the community of that as soon as tomorrow. So thank you very much for bringing that up. And I would say, you know, Kim, while you're collecting your thoughts, that even if you thought we needed a spontaneous resolution to be able to accomplish that tonight, you know, please just advise us if that's what we need.
I think either way is sufficient. I think that we can notify the community tomorrow. If you wanted to do a resolution tonight, just whereas the calendar will be amended with the professional development day, that is perfectly fine. Vote on it. And then we're done and we don't have to come back on, in August to discuss it and vote on it.
Why don't we do that? Is that okay?
I'm happy to make a motion to adjust the first day of school calendar from, to skim, from September 9th to September 10th, is that correct? Those the dates?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
First is students.
Oh, sorry, for students.
Students.
And that the staff development, do I have to mention how the staff development day is being moved also?
That we would, yeah, and that, and that, so the resolution will also indicate that we're going to move the professional development day from February, if I heard you correctly.
I think, yeah.
February 16th to Wednesday, September 9th. Is that sufficient language for the resolution, Kim?
You just give me one second and I'll kind of put it into something that kind of makes a little bit more sense.
Thank you.
Is that two seconds?
Yes.
I think we should do, I'll read it and then resolve that the board, the school district calendar for the 2021 school year be amended as follows. The professional development day scheduled for February 16th be moved to September 9th. Whereas then the first day of school for students will be September 10th. Is that right?
Thank you. Great, thank you. Moved by Julia, seconded by Rory. Thank you. And if there's no further discussion, then we can vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Great move by Liz, seconded by Bill. Again, thank you so very much to everybody at the table for all that went into preparing not just this presentation, but the reopening plans that you're preparing to submit tomorrow. Great job. We're deeply grateful and we remain hopeful for what's to come. Thank you very much. Be safe, everybody, and thank you to our community for joining us.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good night. Thanks.